Welcome everyone to the Township of Franklin's Town Hall on Voting Process with Mayor Phil Kramer. And we'll have Somerset County Clerk Steve Peter up shortly. This will be a brief Town Hall with questions only from the Facebook chat. Mr. Mayor, take it away.
Yeah, so this is a little bit of a, we record, we had some technical difficulties. Of this video is basically to go through the mechanics of voting in this unusual year. We're not going to get into who or why this decision was made to vote this way. None of the people on this video had anything to do with that decision. We just want to make sure you vote safely, both physically and that your ballot counts. So first, we're going to start with a video by our county clerk on how to vote.
All right, I'm going to take the screen. And this is a three minute forty-three second video. County Clerk Steve Peter.
Hi, I'm Somerset County Clerk Steve Peter. And this video is to help our voters use vote by mail ballots. The November 3rd general election will be conducted primarily by mail. And it's important that voters understand how to properly fill out and mail the ballots in time to be counted. Every active voter in Somerset County will be mailed a ballot by October 5th. Ballot should arrive by October 10th. And if you have not received yours by then, please call the Somerset County Clerk's office. Additionally, anyone who registers to vote by October 13th will also have a ballot mailed to them for this election. Using this ballot is the best way for you to ensure your vote is counted in a timely and accurate manner. This is what the ballot looks like. You can see a list of candidates for the various offices up for a vote in this election and ballot questions to the public to weigh in on. First, review the list of offices, candidates, and public questions to familiarize yourself with all your options. You should also look at both sides of the ballot, as most ballots have school board elections and public questions on the back. Once you've decided how you wish to vote, completely fill in the oval to the right of your choice with black or blue pen. Be sure to completely fill in the oval, because the machines will not count Xs, check marks, or incompletely filled-in ovals. You can also write in a candidate if you wish to choose someone who's not on the ballot. Write the name in the space to the right of the office and also be sure to completely fill in the oval. Once you've completed your ballot to your satisfaction, insert it into the included certificate envelope and then seal the envelope. Now print your name, address, and signature on the certificate envelope. If anyone has assisted you in filling out your ballot, their name and signature must also be on the certificate envelope. Place the sealed certificate envelope in the mailing envelope addressed to the Somerset County Board of Elections. Be sure to include your return address on the mailing envelope, but you do not need to include a stamp, as they are postage prepaid, first class. If you choose to have someone known as a bearer, submit your ballot for you to a mailbox or drop box. They must also sign and address the mailing envelope in your presence to certify that they are doing so. Bears can only take three ballots. Ballots can be submitted by using the United States mail, but ballots must be postmarked by 8:00 PM on November 3rd and received by the Board of Elections by November 10th. Or you can use one of thirteen official ballot drop boxes located throughout the county. Or you can hand your own ballot to a poll worker at your polling place on Election Day, November 3rd. Your properly submitted ballot will be scanned and counted by the Board of Elections and included in the results that I certify as the Somerset County Clerk. Thank you for voting, and please call our office at 908-231-7013 if you have any questions or require assistance.
Okay. We're back. Mr. Mayor, you want to take it away for your presentation?
Just wanted to review some of the contacts for this. The Department of State, New Jersey Division of Election website is a place you can go to check to see the status of your mail-in ballot. Obviously, it will not show who you voted for, but it will show that they, whether they've received it and whether it's been accepted. This is this website to go to for that. And then if you have questions, if you've not received your ballot, if you've lost your ballot, et cetera, you can call, you can go to the website, or you can email the county clerk. We are fortunate enough to have a ballot box, a drop box, in Franklin, and it's at the municipal building. This is the municipal building here. This is the library. The gazebo is right here. We have the police station in back of the complex. And here is the circular drive in front of the municipal building. The, this is the place you want to go. This, I'll get to it later, is the place you don't want to go. So if you go to the place you want to go, this is what you're going to see. There's the drop box. These are the fire lanes here. We will allow people to vote, to park momentarily in the fire lanes while they are voting. I mentioned that there's a place you don't want to go. And the reason I bring that out is because there is another drop box of sorts there that has been there for years, maybe decades. That is a place for you to leave your tax and water payments. And it's right here in front of the police station. On the top of the box, it says, "Stop this drop box for township business only. Mail-in ballot drop box is in the front of the municipal building. Do not put your ballots in this box." Okay. Now, there's not going to be the usual voting districts or voting polling places open this time. There was going to be five. I fought and got us seven polling districts or polling places. And they're broken down by district. In about a week or so, you should be receiving, be receiving a postcard that's going to tell you which district you are and where you're going to go. So in districts 1 through 7, it's the Griggs Town Firehouse. 8 through 10 and 30 through 34 is the BOE Building formerly known as Consolata. For the senior communities area, it's the Xeripath. For districts 17, 22 through 22, and 24 through 29, it's the Community Center at the Municipal Complex. For most of the force, for districts 35 through 43, Parkside Community Center. For the eastern half of the 5th Ward, it'll be the East Franklin Firehouse. And for the western half of the 5th Ward, it'll be the Somerset Presbyterian Church at 100 JFK Boulevard. A lot of people don't know where their districts are, again, or which districts they're in. The postcard will be coming. There's a map that shows it a little better. So districts 1 through 7, our Griggs Town Firehouse. 8 through 10 and 30 through 34 is this area. You'll be going to the, I'm sorry, the Consolata area. For what's part of the 3rd Ward and part of the 2nd Ward here, the, the center of town, you're going to go to the Community Center at the Municipal Complex. For the northern part of the 2nd Ward where the senior communities are, you're going to go to Xeripath. For the western part of the 5th Ward, you're going to go to JFK Boulevard. For the eastern part of the 5th Ward, you're going to go to, and that was at the Presbyterian Church at 100 JFK Boulevard. For the eastern part, you're going to go to the East Franklin Firehouse. And for the 4th Ward area, you're going to go to Parkside. After this, are, we're going to go to the normal taping, and the county clerk will be coming on. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, I hope my video was a, a clear presentation of how to actually fill out your ballot. I should note, if you need that same information in Spanish, that is also available on the county website. And then in addition to the information that I gave in the videos, there's one other way that you can return your ballot. And that is to come to the County Administration Building at 20 Grove Street in Somerville. We do have people available in the atrium. The building itself is not really open to the public, but there's a limited area where you can come in. We can issue you a ballot. And you can also, at this point, up until next Tuesday, you can register to vote. And you can also return your ballot and sign the book that you have returned your ballot. So that's yet another way that you can, can return everything to us. But aside from that, I think that my presentation was already shown. And now I can, now I understand why actors never watch their own movies. It's difficult to watch yourself.
So let me ask you some, some questions that others may have online that maybe I'm not even clear about. So very often, people move within town, and they just go back to where they voted before, and no one there at the voting place really knows. And it really doesn't matter that much that they're voting in one place. How is that going to affect people here?
Well, for this election, given that Franklin doesn't have any local races, it won't directly affect any, any of the polling operations. But you were asking earlier about whether, in theory, anybody could go to any polling place in town. And I, I believe that is what the Board of Elections intends. The state has still not opined fully on it, but I, I believe that you can pretty much go to any of the polling places and, and cast the provisional ballot or turn in your, your own ballot.
But let's say I lived at 1 Demont Lane, and I moved to 50 Demont Lane. Am I going to get my mail-in ballot?
If you have not notified us, then chances are you will not get your ballot.
So if you don't have, you said in the video the 10th. Should they have their ballots by now?
They should have them by now. Yeah, we put in the 10th just to be kind of certain that we would have adequate time to send everything out. But we were able to get all the ballots out a bit early, so they should be in all the mailboxes by now.
So if you haven't gotten it by now, I'm going to put this back up. This, this bottom area here, the Somerset County Clerk's office, you need to let them know that you haven't gotten it, probably better by email.
Email, or if you, actually, if you go onto the county clerk's website, we have a tab at the top that's 2020 general election information. And at the very top of that, there's a link that you can click and get to a web form and request a duplicate ballot that way. That's probably the absolute fastest way to do it.
So they will have machines at the, at the polling locations. Can anybody use those machines?
Those machines are strictly intended for disabled voters who cannot otherwise vote on a paper ballot. And they will have to sign an affidavit to that effect before they're allowed to use the machine. So it's very, very limited part of the population that is going to be able to use the machine. In the primary, we had a total of five ballots cast that way throughout the county.
Throughout the whole county?
Yes.
Right, those are the questions I have. Michael, maybe you had some question?
I don't, we do have some questions starting. I asked people to hold them, but I can unleash the hounds if you are. So we're going to take, both the mayor and Mr. Peter are going to take questions from the comment feed on the Township page. The only suggestion I just thought of when I was watching your presentation is if perhaps the note on the drop box that is not the voter drop box of that note could also be in Spanish might be helpful.
That's a good idea.
The, so I'm just going to go ahead and we'll forego the rules, because we don't have a ton of questions, so I can find them. There will, first of all-
Do I need my buzzer to buzz in?
Yes, and this is for a hundred.
I'll answer in the form of a question.
So this, this Facebook recording will automatically be saved onto the Township Facebook page. And I don't know where the Township might also move the recording to other locations. But you, when this concludes, you'll be able to re-watch it if you missed the beginning. And we can also, I can also provide the YouTube link in the comments. I'll put it there in a second for Mr. Peter's presentation, which was only three minutes and forty-three seconds and did a really nice job breaking it down. So the other question is, where do I register to vote?
You can do that online. You can, Mayor, if you would bring up your, your URL, the first part of that is the, the same for the online registration. And then the last part is simply the word "register." I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that.
So-
Yes. If you go to thevoter.svrs nj.gov/register.
If I just type the root of that into the comments over here, so people-
It should work for you.
Let's leave that up for a hot second, Mr. Mayor.
One hot second.
Okay, so I put the, the root on there, and then they should be able to see the options, right? If I leave it at doc.gov?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
To doc.gov/register, and then if they, they could, there's a, a bunch of information there, but-
Okay, I'll add, I'll add that.
Right. And if you don't feel comfortable doing that online, you can, like I say, until next Tuesday, the 13th of October, you can come to the atrium of the County Admin Building at 20 Grove Street in Somerville. And we will be open on Monday, even though the, the county is otherwise closed.
All right, so I'm going to throw a couple more questions at you. Over registration. How do we know which district we are in?
That is, like I say, I'm going to be sending out a postcard to all the voters. We're debating right now whether to cull out of that list those people who have already submitted their ballot. But most voters will get a postcard in the mail from me that will say what your voting district is and where that polling place is. So you'll have that information, right?
And that would be useful to go to your polling location, because then we have even amounts of people hopefully going to there, which will reduce crowding, help social distancing, and even distribution of, of, what do you call, provisional ballots. But it sounds like if you're in a jam and you don't know, you can go to the municipal complex, to the Community Center, or Consolata, or someplace that you know of, and you can go to any polling location. I, I want everybody to vote.
Yes.
Okay. Can I volunteer to help count mail-in ballots instead of working the polls on Election Day?
So the, the, the counting is done by the employees of the Board of Elections. And they are all paid employees. They have to go background checks, and it's, it's not something that we take volunteers for.
Okay. And we have, so there are, there is a question here that's off-topic. Just to remind people, this Town Hall is strictly on the voter, voting process for this election cycle and questions related to that.
You can, you can ask the off-topic question, I will choose whether to-
Well, I have some on-topic questions, so why don't I stick to them? And if you, if you want to go and talk about road repair after, we can certainly do it. Okay, so how do we know our vote has been received?
So if you sign up on that, the online portal that the mayor showed earlier, it will say, when the ballot is actually scanned into the system at the Board of Elections, the status will change to "received." And once the counting begins, which will be approximately 10 days before the election, once they've actually scanned in your ballot and, and processed it, it will change to "accept" it at that point.
So, just so, so I voted, I think it was a week ago today. And I checked mine, and it is not noted to be received yet, so be patient.
Yes.
I got a, a, I was in communication with Chris, the member of the Election Board. I'd asked him about that, and he said, he looked into it a bit. They've received 22,000 ballots, and the backlog is about five days. Just so you understand, 22,000. Franklin has a little over 30,000 registered voters. And the county has about 300,000 registered voters, so that's a lot.
Of active voters, about, about a quarter of a million, 250.
Yeah, so that's a lot of envelopes for you to look at this.
Yeah, yeah. And, and hopefully, after we get past the 13th and the registration cutoff comes through, then the Board can turn all of their resources to processing the ballots. So hopefully, that backlog will go down after that point.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So we have about 30,000 registered voters in a township of, what, 65,000 to 70,000 people? I mean, do you, do you know roughly how many people would otherwise be eligible to vote out of those 65,000 or 70,000?
I don't.
Age-wise, I guess. So, well, in that case, moving on.
So actually, as we were talking, I got updated numbers in from the Board.
Well, good.
This just in, breaking-
Breaking news. 30,000 ballots have been received, 23,000 have been scanned in.
Okay.
There's a follow-up to the question regarding volunteering. This person is a paid poll worker and has been for over 10 years, but is not particularly interested in working in the polls on Election Day, but wanted to help. And so are those, so how are those paid workers assigned? And is there any opportunity for her to, you know, kind of shift her duties?
Potentially, I would give the, the Board of Elections a call on that, because they're the ones who actually handle that aspect of staffing. So their number is 908-231-7084.
Give me that one more time. Well, you know what, I'm not going to, I'm going to assume the person has it, and I'm not going to put it in the chat, because they might, people might miss the trip for what purposes.
It's also on, on the county website.
Okay. And yet, and so the question is just a confirmation, so you can still go to the polls to vote in person on Election Day?
You can vote in person, but you will be voting on a paper provisional ballot, which looks almost identical to the vote-by-mail ballot you received in the mail. The one caveat for that, that I would, would say is that if you do go and vote the provisional ballot, the Board of Elections cannot even look at that ballot until all the vote-by-mail ballots have been received. And as we stated earlier, if they're postmarked on or before Election Day and received by the 10th, they can still be counted. So that means that the provisionals will not even begin to be counted until at least November the 11th.
So just, one, one quick point of verification. In terms of voting on Election Day, you have two, two options really, to go and vote the traditional way. But you can also bring your mail-in ballot and hand, hand it to the poll worker at the poll site on Election.
And you can bring in only your own ballot. So if you're bringing it to a, a drop box or any of the other options, you can have a bearer bring it to you and fill out the bearer portion. If you're bringing it to the polling place, it literally has to be your own ballot.
That's a maximum of the person delivering to the, to the mail-in, maximum of three ballots?
Maximum of three right now, yes.
Okay.
And being a little careful, you said vote the traditional way. Maybe vote in the traditional place. You're not voting at a machine.
Right. In person-
Vote in the traditional being the way it was done for the first hundred years of the republic. Old, yes, old, old school.
All right.
So let me ask the questions. Steve, what prevents me from mailing in my ballot and then coming in and doing a provisional ballot besides?
Nothing, nothing prevents you from doing that. However, the Board of Elections has a tally of all the, the vote-by-mail ballots that have been returned. That would indicate that Mayor Phil Kramer has voted a vote-by-mail ballot. And then when they see a provisional come in with the signature of Phil Kramer, Mayor Phil Kramer coming in, they will say, "Aha, this person has already voted." At that point, they will pass the list of people who have done that to the prosecutor's office. And the prosecutor will contact you and see if you did it maliciously or if you simply forgot, because we do have people who occasionally forget.
Speaking of forgetting, I forgot where I put my vote-by-mail ballot. I honestly forgot. What do I do? What do I do?
If you've forgotten it, I would go to the, my website and click on the link to request a duplicate ballot. Or if you don't want to do that, give my office a call.
Or if you don't send in your mail-in ballot, you can vote provisional?
You can vote provisional. Or you can come to the atrium of the Admin Building at 20 Grove Street in Somerville and get the ballot, vote it right there on the spot, and return it.
There's a question, I'm interpreting this a little bit, but I think it's really asking about how election results are reported and the sequence and timing with regard to mail-ins versus the day of in-person and any other variations.
So the, the, the current plan is, on Election Night at 11:00, the Board of Elections will have begun processing all of the previously received vote-by-mail ballots. Everything that is counted that evening up until 11:00 will be reported over to my office, and I will put them up on our, our website where we have the, the normal Election Night reporting. Following that, the goal is to every couple of days, update that site with new numbers that come in. And the, the first week will be just strictly vote-by-mail numbers. And then when they start counting the provisionals, depending on how many there are, we might have one or two updates. If there's a small enough number, then we'll just do them all at one. The Board of Elections has to complete all the counting by the 20th of November. And then I get the weekend to, to write my final exam and report to the state all of the certified numbers by the 23rd.
So there's a question, I'm going to expand it a little bit, but the, basically, it's asking about staffing for the, at the poll locations day of. So one, I would say maybe based on the mail-ins so far, what are you anticipating? And then also, just in terms of managing the lines and things and COVID precautions, that kind of thing, what's the, what's the game plan and staffing scenario?
So staffing each of the locations will have, you know, a minimum of four board workers that are, you know, trained with all the current procedures. The board workers are all required to wear face masks- The board workers are all required to wear face masks and adhere to CDC protocols. We strongly encourage all of the voters who are showing up to also wear masks and follow those protocols. We will enforce, you know, distancing so that the line may stretch out into the street, but, you know, everybody's going to be spaced out. And then-
You're asking people to be at six feet?
Yes. And then what was the other part of the question? Now, I lost my train of thought.
I think you, I think you hit it. So the number of workers, what they're going to manage in terms of any other, you know, the PVE and spacing people out, and you're asking people to come and please wear masks and keep at a six-foot minimal, minimum six-foot distance in line. And then we have one more question here. Is the, well, this is not on this topic, but with town halls, Mr. Mayor, so at some point, maybe just let people know if you're, what your intentions are in terms of future town halls on other topic related to the town.
So, you know, these town halls have almost exclusively been about COVID. I'll do more COVID town halls as, as we need them. Right now, we're, I wouldn't say we're in a COVID lull by any means, but there's not a lot significantly changing that I feel the need to inform the public about other than voting by mail, because that, that really is a COVID issue or part of COVID issue. By the way, the person who had the road paving, mayor.cramer@franklinnj.gov, mayor.cramer@franklinnj.gov, happy to answer it there. I probably just won't have a specific answer to a specific question right now. I have a question for our stand for. So I have a really sophisticated printing press. What prevents me, besides my good nature, from putting up just a bunch of mail-in ballots? You know?
The, well, there are a couple of different things. One, we have super-secret security features in the ballots that you will not know about, and your printing press will not replicate. And for the ballot to come in, it really has to be not just the ballot, but the complete package of the ballot and all of the envelopes and all of the information that you would need to obtain from various sources that make it unlikely you would be able to do so.
So a couple, couple of quick things, you're nearing the end here. One is that if I didn't answer your question and it's voter-related, then it's probably because we already covered it. So this will be recorded, and we recommend you go back in and listen to the full video on the township's Facebook page. One question, asking to clarify our conversation regarding the number of ballots received versus the number of eligible voters, registered voters in Franklin. Can you repeat those numbers? There were some 30,000-type numbers being offered, and we just want to clarify what they meant.
Well, what was, how many have been received now at the county, Steve?
Well, that's county-wide.
That's county-wide, that's the, I think that's the source of the confusion.
Right, yeah, okay, so that's the county-wide number, and I was just giving you a frame of reference. There's something over 30,000 voters in Franklin, something over 300,000 voters. And Somerset County, and the clerk tells us 250,000 of them are active. So I was just giving those numbers as reference, so you can see what portion.
Yeah, roughly 10% that have come in mail-in.
So actually, that's a-
And my prediction for Election Night, well, after we get all the results in is I'm anticipating we're going to have about 180,000 ballots cast.
So can you define active voter?
Somebody who has cast a ballot within the past two federal election cycles.
Two, so that, oh, two federal, not two presidential?
Federal, yes.
So that would be four years ago.
Basically, four years, yeah.
And, you know, I just couldn't get to it then, but this is a really important election. So I didn't get my ballot, what do I do?
If all else fails, you can go to the polling place and cast a paper provisional ballot.
So I think when we were talking before, Steve, it was, what I was kind of asking is, you know, based on the number of mail-ins you've got, which you say is about 30,000, do you have a sense of what Election Day will look like in terms of the numbers and the potential crowds, or you would say above average, below average, or it's impossible to predict?
I would say certainly below-average crowds. And, you know, God help us if all we're doing has, doesn't reduce the crowd size.
Yeah, a little point of this, yeah.
But we've got, like, you know, we said 30,000 already, and my estimate is we've got about 20,000 that have been returned to my office as undeliverable. So that's a large chunk of potential ballots that have already been accounted for. And I think we're going to get, you know, a steady stream of them in. You know, 30,000, and basically, within the last week is what that ultimately is.
So those are the people who moved from one to Mont Lane to 50 Demont Lane or something like that?
That, or they moved to, you know, County or Wisconsin and didn't update their address. In the past, and I will point this out, if you, for some reason, got a ballot delivered to your house and it's for a previous occupant, or if it's for a child of yours that has moved away, don't just throw that in the garbage. I think a lot of people have done that in the past when they received the sample ballots, and that has led to the voter list not being as accurate as they could be. So if you get a ballot in the mail and it's not for anybody who is legitimately in your house, please write on it, "return to sender, no longer at this address," or whatever the reason is, so that those can be returned to the Board of Elections so that after all the processing is done, they can go through and send out the required notifications and get those entries in the, in the database cleared up.
So they can just drop that in the mail, no postage required, or they, I guess they could put it in a voter Dropbox?
They, I wouldn't advise that.
All right, good.
I just got a note from the township that they're not sure when they streamed initially that the video made the livestream. So what I did is I took your video, Stephen, I just, I could replay it, but I think I'm just putting it in the comments section, and I think when the township has this up, they can sort of put it at the top in the, in the post. So I don't think we need to replay it. But if anybody is on the, on the meeting here and did not see the county clerk, Steve Peters', 3 minute, 43-second presentation on the voter process here in Somerset County, it basically runs through all of this for you. So you have it there in the comments section, and we'll make sure it's up and around town.
He taught me Spanish.
And I hate to, oh, there's another one, very nice. I hate to stage you or give you competition, but I hear Danny DeVito has a video out there.
He does.
It's only a minute long.
Yeah.
Brevity. All right.
What can I say, Danny is shorter than I am.
All right, so we're 45 minutes. I think we got to all our questions. And so we can go ahead and wrap it up. So just want to thank County Clerk Steve Peter, Mr. Mayor, as always, I'm Mike Steinberg, just volunteering to help out a little bit. So we appreciate everyone joining, and this will be up on the township page.
Be well, Franklin.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Steve.